Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. This meeting is hereby called order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for this day and thank you for the many men and women who work hard every day on behalf of the citizens of Hardin County to make this the best place in the state of Texas to live and raise our families. Lord, please always guide us to make the very best decisions we can on behalf of the people that we serve and on behalf of the employees of Hardin County. Amen. Now, a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounded great. Thank you. Item number three, canvas the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election in accordance with section sixty-seven point zero zero seven, Texas Election Code, and this will be presented this morning by our elections administrator, Ms. Alyssa Freeman. Good morning, Ms. Freeman.
Good morning.
Ms. Freeman, can you, when you're going through there, can we just read the winner's appeal form, please?
Yes, sir. We had a total of forty-three thousand, one hundred and nine registered voters for this election. We had a total of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy voters who voted. And so President, Vice President Donald J. Trump, J.D. Vance, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. U.S. Senator Ted Cruz, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two. U.S. Representative, District Thirty-Six, Brian Babin, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. Railroad Commissioner Christie Craddock, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifteen. Justice Supreme Court Place Two, Jimmy Blackwell, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight. Justice Supreme Court Place Four, John Devine, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine. Justice Supreme Court Place Six, Jane Bland, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and one. Presiding Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, David J. Schneck, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-one. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Seven, Gina Parker, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen. Judge Court of Criminal Appeals, Place Eight, Lee Finley, twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. State Representative, District Eighteen, Janice Holt, twenty-four thousand, seventy-eight. Justice Ninth Court of Appeals, District Place Three, Leanne Johnson, twenty-four thousand, nine seventeen. Justice Ninth Court of Appeals, District Place Four, Kent Chambers, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two. District Judge, Eighty-Eighth Judicial District, Earl B. Stover III, twenty-four thousand, seven eighty-six. District Judge, Three-Fifty-Six Judicial District, Steve Thomas, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six. District Attorney, Eighty-Eighth Judicial Judicial District, Rebecca Walton, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-one. County Attorney Matthew Minnick, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten. Sheriff Mark Davis, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four. County Tax Suspect Collector Steve Smith, twenty-four thousand, eight oh six. County Commissioner Precinct One, L.W. Nubbin Cooper, Jr., five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. County Commissioner Precinct Three, Amanda Young, six thousand, eight forty-six. County Constable Precinct One, Kenny Davenport, tw- two thousand, two hundred and two. County Constable Precinct Two, Ben Hawthorne, three thousand, eight forty-nine. County Constable Precinct Three, Robert Trey Brothers, six thousand, one oh nine. County Constable Precinct Four, Corey Jeffcoat, three thousand, three thirty-six. County Constable Precinct Five, Danny Solins, eight thousand and two. And County Constable Precinct Six, Ross Jordan, one thousand, four hundred and forty-eight.
Those are the ones we need to canvass today?
Yes, sir.
I just want to add, on the very front page, it says the number of people voted is sixty-five point six percent. Is that correct? That's a pretty good turnout.
Really good. Early voting was fifty-one percent. So, yeah, it was a very good turnout.
All right, that's great.
Motion to accept that present?
Yes. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, signed by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is special recognition of Mrs. Georgia Campbell and Mr. Nelson Campbell for forty-five years of service to Hardin County as election workers. I'd like to start off by asking Mr. and Ms. Campbell, please come up, and Mr. Woodall, if you want to join them, you sure are welcome to. And I'll start with Congressman Babin's office. If you'll come on up, I know you have something to present to Mr. and Mrs. Campbell, and we'll start with Ms. Kelly. We certainly appreciate y'all, and this is Ms. Sonya Kelly.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And she's going to recognize you first.
Thank you. As he said, I'm Sonya Kelly. I'm with Congressman Babin's office, and it's my honor to be here today to give you this certificate of congressional record. So, I'm just going to read one of these, and then you'll get yours, because you each get one. So, presented to Georgia Campbell on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, presented on behalf of the people of the Thirty-Sixth Congressional District of Texas, in honor of a true American patriot and in recognition of your forty-five years of dedicated service to the Hardin County elections, excuse me. And God bless you and your future endeavors, Congressman Brian Babin.
Can we get a picture?
Picture. Today?
Thank you.
That looks wonderful.
All right, next, I will ask Jennifer Harris to come up, and she has, she has a certificate to present to y'all on behalf of Senator Nichols. So, if y'all don't mind, just hang out up there for just a few minutes.
I also have a certificate of appreciation from State Senator Robert Nichols. It says, "In recognition of and to commemorate and honor your forty-five years of service as Hardin County election workers, and in particular, your commitment to serving the people of Hardin County. Congratulations."
Let's do another picture, please.
And I think Larry Woodall wants to speak, and I'll come down and join y'all. Go right ahead.
What I'd like to tell you is, for the forty-five years, I think Sue Cleavins worked probably with them longer than anybody else. And I joined Sue some years ago. I don't remember how many years ago.
Yeah, I got Larry.
But Georgia is well-known for her brownies that she brings to every election cycle. And probably the best brownies that we have ever had. But in addition to that, she takes care of all of the ballots, makes sure that they're stamped, and the ballot table is filled all the time with ballots. And so she does a great job of that. Now Nelson, he has worked the scanner and correcting everybody that has a problem with their ballot not being accepted by the scanner. He is right there to take care of the issue and has been a service all of that time. Robin has worked with him quite a while, too, on another, in another capacity, but she has worked with him as well. So, they have done a great job, and they're still doing it. And I don't know how many years, every, the last three or four years, they've told us, this is the last year. But they always show up.
Well, you always ask us.
Can't do without.
Yeah, we enjoy it. I've met an awful lot of nice people. That goes along with it.
We certainly do appreciate y'all, and it's my great honor to say on behalf of Hardin County Commissioners Court to present you with these certificates.
Oh, I didn't know we were going to get all of them.
These surprise me. When they say certificate of appreciation and grateful recognition of your continuing service and support to Hardin County as an election worker, we hereby present Georgia Campbell and Mr. Nelson Campbell with this certificate of appreciation for forty-five years of service and going, it sounds like. So, this is Mrs. Campbell. We really appreciate y'all very much, and if y'all don't mind, I'd like to get y'all to move over to the middle. We're going to stand up behind y'all, and anybody else that wants to come up and take a picture that works elections with Mr. and Mrs. Campbell, y'all seats come up. And if anybody wants to say a few words, we'll let you do that as well.
Let me get the high. This is awkward.
They'll come unplugged if you do.
Talk about this. I'll just go stay back here, Bobby. I'm going to act like I'm official.
Sonya, you want to come up here, please?
Sure. Y'all are really good, man. It's fun.
Y'all don't know where there's a woman in there, can't tell.
I'm afraid, Mr. Aaron. Uh-oh. Okay, I'll scoot right here.
Look between two people, sure if you can back there. There you go. Okay, that might work. Let's try this. One, two, three. Let's do another. One, two, three. Okay. That should be great.
Thank you, Ms. Beckton. After this meeting, Connie Beckton and Shirley Cook have some refreshments available for everyone in the dome, and we invite you to join us there, please. Anything else? You good? All right. The rest of this is not nearly as exciting as that. Item five, discuss considering possibly approved three projects for Trader and Associates grant administrator for the GLO Disaster Recovery Reallocation Program, otherwise known as DRRP, to submit to the GLO on or before November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at five p.m. the call for projects deadline. Ms. Smith, if you don't mind, let's pass this. We'll take care of the rest of this business and come back to it, because I think that may take just a little bit. And we'll get you to move up here to this table when you're ready, if that's okay with the court. All right, number six, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign change order number two R. One, change order number two R. Two, and change order number three with McKenna's Construction concerning the climate-controlled metal building on a property located at one oh four Monroe Street, Coates, Texas, and Arca Funded Projects. I haven't reviewed these thoroughly, Misty or Erin, but I'm just going off our conversations in the past. Change order number one was a certain amount. One of these actually subtracts an amount from that. Overall, what's the total change order on all three change orders? One, two? Well, it's not going to exceed what we've already approved, if I remember right. Is that correct? Because we had approved somewhere around sixty-nine, and we have a negative thirty-five, and then we've got two more for, but we need that amount written into the record so we can, I mean, it's, it's here. If you'll just authorize me to, tell, authorize me to sign all of them, what's the total amount of the change orders? While they're adding that up, I just want to say that Misty and Erin worked hard to just make sure that the contractor was accountable on these change orders and make sure that the county came out, you know, like we should on these, that we're being fair. Let me come back to this one, too.
No, sir. The total change to date is forty-six thousand, one seventy-five, sixty-three.
All right, any questions?
Is that the total of, from the sixty-nine?
Yes, sir.
So, it's, it goes from sixty-nine down to?
Yes, sir.
Move to further.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, consider approval of request by Commissioner Young for the purchasing agent to solicit bids to overlay approximately one hundred and thirty-two feet by twenty-four feet on Park Road located in Precinct Three. This is to repair the damages to that Park Road bridge. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go back to item number five now. In a prior meeting, we had already authorized or submitted a letter to West Hardin Water Supply Corporation. I think we did that sometime in September, letting them know that we would sponsor a project. They've got a water well out there that needs to be replaced that serves the Batson Community Water Well Number Four. And we had agreed and authorized me to send a letter in support of sponsoring that project. I'd just like to get it on the record today. That will be one of the projects. Ms. Smith is also the grant administrator for West Hardin Water Supply. But Ms. Smith, of course, represents Trader and Associates. And do you know what the amount of that project is going to be, an approximate amount?
Approximately a million dollars or less. We are trying to get one more quote to get some firm numbers, but Jeff Woodland's is here as well, and he's got some more information on that.
Good, and that covers, that amount, you cover engineering, grant administration, and construction, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm actually going to meet with them tomorrow. We've been passing a lot of paperwork back and forth. I've had several conference calls with them. And tomorrow afternoon was as soon as that we could all get together, so I'm actually going to perform a site visit with them tomorrow afternoon, go through, see if there's anything else that needs to go along with that well. So, we're trying to move really quickly on it to make this deadline, but we should be good.
And just to refresh everyone's memory, this DRRP, this is funds that were left over from all the way back to Ike and going forward to Amelba, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we qualify for almost all of those disasters because of the damages that we sustained in each one of those. The twenty-fifteen floods, twenty-sixteen floods, and of course Harvey in seventeen, Amelba in nineteen, and then Ike in two thousand eight. We can only submit three projects. They need to be around the two million dollar range or less. Although the, I think the solicitation says you can apply for up to twenty million, but the advice that we've gotten from the grant administrator and the engineer, from information that they've received from the GLO is to keep it around two million. We've also got a ten percent match, and just to make sure everybody's aware that we did discuss with West Hardin Water Supply, they would be responsible for the match on that project. And so if everybody's in agreement, we'll put it on the record here today that project number one will be the water well for West Hardin Water Supply. And then we need to come up with two other projects. We've had some discussions and some meetings over the past week or so. We just authorized Trader and Associates as our grant administrator on this project about a week ago. And so we've quickly discussed some projects, and we need to come up with two more to authorize them to submit this Thursday as the deadline at five p.m. Do you want to go ahead and throw out a few of those that we've discussed, and let's talk about them here?
Sure, and just a little bit of information first before I dive into specific projects. Because these are the residual funds, the juror and office is asking for projects that can be completed, and that's going to include your environmental review, engineering design, and construction of the project within eighteen to twenty-four months. So, I do want to make sure everybody is aware that that's going to rule out pretty much any kind of drainage project that's going to require any kind of permitting. We just simply don't have the time. On top of that, the Director of the Program.
Can I get you an ad wire on the permitting, just so that everybody knows how long it takes to get permitted for drainage, if you don't mind?
More than the two years, more than likely. We still would be waiting on a permit from the Corps at that point. I say that based on a couple of projects I have right now, that one of the applications, we're in year three. And though the regulatory requirements are that it's reviewed within a year, what they do at the end of the year is start the clock ticking again by saying, we didn't finish within the year, we now have another year. That's all there is to it.
Can I interject something?
Of course.
We ran into this with the Mill Creek Cleanout Project when President Obama was in office. Congressman Babin was really effective in helping us communicate to President Trump. He signed an executive order that got things rolling, and a project that had been on hold for three years was done, probably within Trump's first six months in office. I believe we'll have another group of executive orders rescinding the Biden administration. Would that still be in effect, up taking that long? I expect that to happen through.
I mean, historically, no. I mean, this really is unprecedented, what we've seen lately with the amount of time that it's taking. And I do believe it probably is an aftereffect of the additional restrictions and regulations that were put in place during the Biden administration. Now, can we predict whether those will be rescinded? We don't. And on top of that, the Director of the Program does have the right, she's reserved the right basically, to kick out projects that she does not believe can be completed in that eighteen to twenty-four month time period. So, it's not just a matter of do we feel confident it can be completed? We have to get it through Heather LaGroen and Esmeralda Sanchez that they believe that it can be as well. There's other things that go in hand with the Corps permitting as well. Even if we were able to get some motion quickly, if there is any kind of, say, alligator, snappy turtle, bats are the new, whatever the salamander was a few years ago in the Austin area, the bats in this area are the new listed species that we really don't even have any mitigation efforts for. There could be other complications because of those requirements of the Corps to reach out to Texas Parks and Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So, even if we were able to get it through and meet by clearance, if the Corps had to issue those requests for comments, it would likely slow it down. And I don't believe that the endangered species list will change dramatically anytime soon.
Along those same lines, we still fall under the LMI guidelines on this?
That does get extra points that are seemingly insurmountable to not have. I would definitely want to put forward a project that meets the low to moderate income requirements. Now, that being said, that's not as difficult as it has been. The county's LMI did change pretty dramatically in the latest HUD-based LMI that was released just this past year. So, there are some very concentrated areas, which has not historically been the case, really in most of southeast Texas. You just don't seem to have a lot of concentrations. You have one house next door to, you know, that's four hundred thousand next door to one that's a hundred thousand and so forth. It seems to be, you know, a very even distribution of population period. But this year, there are some areas, and I'm happy to pull up that map if we need to. And that is what we've looked at already, to try to narrow down what projects seem to be both good fits for the timing and then the low to moderate income criteria.
So, we could, we could rely on past surveys. We don't have to go out and, because we already have that information, I suppose.
So, surveys, if you've done a door-to-door household income survey, those are good for five years. So, we would need to look at the date, and it is generally the date of the submittal of the application. So, that does go for each and every survey in the packet. So, if you have one that's outside that date, we can just get the one and reuse basically the same information. But right now, the census data supports LMI projects without the need to survey in some areas. One of those areas is going to be Keith Road. We'll of course need to dive in a little bit more to make sure who the beneficiaries would be. But that was one that met the criteria, and that can be done fairly quickly. And when I say that, I mean, street improvements. Those are going to be the easiest to, road repairs, street improvements. Roadside ditches are technically considered street projects. And so you can do regrading, reshaping of roadside ditches, and redo the road at the same time.
Culvert replacement?
And culvert replacement, yes, sir. And of course, that again goes in line with the roadside ditches. If you do start getting into major crossings, you can switch over to that HUD activity code of flood and drainage. But by and large, what we're talking about here will be a street project. Those can be cleared environmentally very easily. A lot of times, they're going to be an environmental exemption, or at least a categorical exclusion that converts to exempt. They can also be designed a little bit more quickly than some of your, you know, larger drainage projects. And also constructed, you know, much more efficiently. There's not any waiting for parts to be backordered from wherever they may be coming from, depends on what kind of project you have. Sure.
If anybody wants to go ahead and join the Campbells, they're going to go ahead and, Ms. Cook is going to go ahead and take anybody to the dome that wants to join them for refreshments. Anybody who wants to stay and continue to be a part of this meeting, you're certainly welcome to do so. Thank y'all very much. Sorry to interrupt you again, but some of them are starting to kind of glaze over there.
Oh, no, that's okay. I, I understand.
Yeah. So, just to kind of dovetail into what Lynn is saying, I know we had a preliminary phone call discussing some potential improvements and really rehabilitation of some, some of the confines of this program with, with LMI, with, with the need of these projects to move quickly, not having drawn out environmental, et cetera. One of the projects that she mentioned was Keith Road, if I'm not mistaken. Amanda, it was from Rolling Hills Drive to Beard Lane on Keith Road. That turned out to be right around one point seven miles, I believe, is what my staff told me. We provide, provide just a really high-level linear foot cost on that, and that was right around one point seven billion of just construction dollars. So, just to give the court an idea of a possible project, as you referenced Keith, that's what, that would be. Of course, we have GA fees, grant administration fees on top of that, but that's just a, have a ballpark of what that project costs would be.
And what are we doing? Would we run into any engineering, I'm not sorry, engineering, but environmental or permitting issues on that type of project?
With it being within the road right of way, it looks like it would be streamlined. So, that would be a, a, a good candidate, a project to meet the timeline. Engineering would be relatively straightforward, would get plans generated relatively quickly. Construction itself would move on quickly. We wouldn't expect any environmental snags on that. And this is not roadside dishes. This is just the painting, essentially milling, reworking, new base that's needed and overlay.
And that's because that road was damaged during Harvey?
There was, yes, sir. It was, there was lots of areas. So, was that road underwater?
A portion of the road, about a half a mile or two a mile, was redone after Harvey with public assistance funds. But the rest of the road, since Harvey, we were having a lot of base damage and holes, not even just small potholes, but big holes come up overnight.
And that's the worst. Did Ken repay on Keith Road before?
If he did, it's been a long time ago. It's a three-mile-long road, so I would never be able to do it with my budget. The first portion was when Alvin had that, that part of the road, and he did that part with public assistance funds.
He basically did like each side of the bridge there for a certain distance, I believe. Is that right?
Right. From sixty-nine to between Temple Creek and Rolling Hills. So, it's a little bit less than a mile.
So, we'd be looking to, with the two million available, just narrowing it down to Keith Road, because you said y'all would have fees on top of that?
We, we would have grant administration fees and engineering. That was just a really high-level look. It gives the construction dollars, just to have an idea of the magnitude of what that stretch of cost would be.
Typically, that area would not be covered by any grant, with the LMI and all that. But this section that really needs to be done, we feel like we could get that with survey.
So, the two million that Commissioner Kirkendall just referenced, I might have misunderstood, that that's two million per project, and we got another project, correct?
Correct, sir.
Oh, two million per?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought, I was thinking it was two total.
Yeah. Probably didn't explain that properly.
So, with this, is it an overlay, rework the base? Is it ditch work as well?
No, sir. This would only be Keith Road.
If we added any ditch work, it would go over to two million.
Oh, yes.
Is there any ditch recovery or needed in that stretch major?
Nothing major. Nothing we can take.
All right, so there's one possible project. Let's kind of maybe put it in our bucket over here, and let's talk about what else might be available. I know Commissioner Kirkendall has some. I know Commissioner Kirkendall has, uh, some work that he, you and he have discussed, uh, some time in the past and he's gonna bring that up here. It's charming how he wants to.
Well, I can go whenever.
Anytime, sir.
So we met on post-plant, those culverts, be redirected. I don't really remember, I think it was a time issue, the last time, we just wouldn't have had time to add that project and I don't really remember. But that may be a project, uh, where that road floods, a lot of the culverts were put in, uh, I'll say wrong, on the initial put in and they need to be rearranged and possibly, uh, maybe one culvert completely, maybe they make up too many culverts in it. But it's in an area on post-plant that floods really bad, like on the Ford Intrang. And so I don't know if that one would work. And then the Holland Road project is with Schaumburg and Polk and that still will go on a different grant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So right off the top of my head, post-plant could be one if, I don't really remember what, why we mixed it.
I think it was a time factor. Honestly, uh, sitting here, I don't remember all the details.
I don't need it, but I wanted to bring that up, uh, just in case that one would work, 'cause, uh, who's your main guy that met us out there?
Uh, Stephen. Stephen Zack.
Zack, yeah.
So these have to fall within a time period with Ike, Harvey. So is there some type of documentation that has to be available to show that that damage came from that storm?
It can be anything from a statement that is signed by county staff or emergency management staff. It can be a FEMA public assistance claim. That's probably the easiest way to demonstrate that there is damage. Um, I can also use Google Earth imagery to show that there was standing water on the road if it is a road project. Um, and of course, it was kind of funny when we looked up Keith Road, the Google map image is a bit underwater. Uh, so it's not difficult. I also have, um, from Harvey in particular, I have a disk from the Solsbibi that they were kind enough to give me with, um, I mean, I think it's around nine hundred photos from Harvey. The only problem is a lot of them aren't marked and everything looks the same underwater. But we can always sift through those as well if we need to. Um, and of course, we do a lot of research. Um, Facebook is always a good, good source. We don't have to be able to prove it on Thursday. We just need to be able to check boxes to say that these are the storms that we want this to be included, um, for consideration under.
And if we're needing projects to just fill, so we don't lose any money, we could actually probably raise post-plant up. Everybody's familiar with that, by North Orange Water, that intersects between ninety-two and Oldsburger. The front part of that goes underwater a lot. So, I mean, it's just a matter of trying to find projects to fill money. But if anybody else has projects, then we don't have to do it, you know?
Now is that from, let's see, is that ninety-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Two.
It connects to Oldsburger Highway.
While she's looking that up, Judge, uh, going back to project number one on item number five, I, I certainly do not have any, uh, thing against that project, but I think it would be, uh, and, and you, we might have already covered it, but I think it would be very important to document that there are extenuating circumstances on that water well over there. Because we have other water districts that's gonna see what we're doing here. And in the future, when we have money that they might could use, they're gonna make requests and they're gonna say, well, y'all have help.
Yeah.
But there are extenuating circumstances on this project.
And Commissioner Young's got some emails from them that would show that and they can also ask Melinda to get us something very formal. Uh, between, and, uh, he's, the engineer, he's already asked for their engineer to turn over all those engineering documentation, so we can get something from, to cover that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And one thing to add, as far as it being unique, when I was sitting here saying we can't have anything with permitting, um, typically a well would require significantly more because usually we're drilling a well in a separate location. This one's basically going in the same footprint. It's that the, um, the equipment is obsolete, so it can't just be repaired or replaced. It is going to have to be a new well. But given that it is on the same site, it does limit the amount of environmental review that would be required. So in other words, normally this would not be something I'd be saying, we could do this amount of time.
And, uh, the sense of urgency with us sponsoring this project is, um, over the summer, um, Batson was without water for several days. Their, all of their residents were without water that were on the system, so, um, they knew it was a problem and they had been looking at grants and stuff to apply on their own, but because, um, of that incident and this grant being available, we would have to sponsor it, obviously. But, um, that's where the sense of urgency came from, that they were without water for several days.
But the initial damage, did it come from the storm from Harvey?
It did. I, I, I actually verified that. I asked, um, to make sure. Because that is a big piece of what's happening is the silting end of the equipment. Um, but that is one of the very first questions I asked them to make sure.
And that's on the water well, correct?
Yes. So as far as post-plant road goes, um, I just on first glance, looking at the, um, low to moderate income data at a high level, um, it looks like it's, it's potentially going to meet the LMI criteria. Um, really quite honestly, without any issue. Um, depending on what we would say the beneficiary group is, but, um, is the twe- is FM twenty-nine thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure that I have it right on here.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, based on, based on HUD's map, that's again, just a high level view of it, it does appear that it would meet the LMI criteria.
Commissioner Kirkendall, do you remember if there was any flood plain issues?
I don't, I don't remember.
I don't see any, I was, um, while we were visiting and I do not see.
I will say, if y'all wanna meet, the best day this week would be Thursday.
I believe that's, that's the date of submittals.
So do we need to meet before?
We're, we're kind of under a, kind of a tight time.
Two days from now is the date.
I have to meet early in the morning.
Okay.
I have an obligation after lunch, but it'll be early.
We'll be available whenever we have to.
Okay.
For this application, they're going to phase it. This first initial submittal asks for very little information. Um, as a matter of fact, what we could do for the most part is put in the application for the two million dollars and then back into how far that goes. Um, we don't even have to name the area. When we went back and started, um, filling these in, I had done a preliminary run-through and we have submitted a couple now, so we have a better idea. But, um, we realized that the map, the one and only map that is included is going to be of the courthouse here and where it's located. Not anything to do with the project. It's not on the project specific screens. It truly is just a matter of what, what storms can you tie this damage back to? Are you committing the match and, um, is it LMI? Everything else is outside of your control. It's based on, um, social vulnerability index, composite disaster index. All of that's preloaded into the system. We don't even have to call the project out by name. We just say that we're gonna do streets, flood and drainage, water, sewer, um, and the dollar amount that we're requesting. And then they'll come back afterwards and invite you to apply for the actual project.
I think it's important to, not necessarily for right now, but for future, that we include in the minutes that it be known that there are areas that we need to address that are more important than what we're addressing now, but-
Yes.
There was a lot of things that went on behind the scenes with emails or, or meetings or whatever to take care of projects, uh, off of Highway sixty-nine where we just received a, a big, uh, flood down there. And, and we have discussed areas in both mine and Commissioner Kirkendall's precincts that would take care of that down there. But the amount of money that we have on this wouldn't cover those projects.
And also I think we'd run into that permitting issue there. We're talking about some drainage improvements. I think I emailed y'all that the other day when he told me about it for Boggy Creek, Paula Branch and, uh, Black Creek. Uh, that would be excellent for this, except we would run into permitting issues there, I think. Is that correct?
Yes, and we do have the studies that are pending for Boggy Creek and Black Creek. Uh, once we have those studies complete, that's going to enable us to hopefully get some money coming your way from a couple of different programs. Um, FMA might be a good option for that. Um, HMGP, some of the other programs, but, um, one of the other ones we have looked at was Beaver Brook because that was one that had been pulled from FEMA PA. Um, it was going to likely exceed the budget. It did have permitting issues. Um, you know, we, we did take a few looks and I agree it's hard because, um, we don't always get to apply for the most needed projects when we're dealing with HUD funds in particular because we have to meet that low to moderate criteria. And so it was more of, you know, what project can we fit into this box?
I said, my precinct is, actually Boggy Creek covered all four precincts.
Mm-hmm.
So, or all four precincts are affected by Boggy Creek.
Yes, sir.
Also, last week we spoke about, um, adding these projects to the regional flood plan, um, that we've been working on. I'm on the board of the regional flood plan group, um, to add them to that so we can apply for flood infrastructure funds to pay, uh, the match on a lot of these grants too. So we added probably five or six projects to that as well.
Well, thank you and Melinda for catching that and making sure they got it.
Sure.
Both y'all. Um, we say it all the time and it's kind of like beating a dead horse, but I do think it's important to say it again here today is, uh, the Congress appropriates money when a disaster happens. And here we are talking about money that's left over from two thousand eight from Hurricane Ike that hasn't been spent yet. So we have this flood that happened on November the ninth. People have been saying, well, we got all this grant money, where has it been spent? It's probably been misappropriated, it's probably been whatever. Most of it's not even here yet. We haven't even received half of that money yet that was appropriated in twenty eighteen. And, uh, it just takes time. There's a whole lot of bureaucratic red tape in all of this money. Um, and so I'll just leave it at that. It doesn't come all of a sudden. If it did, we could fix a lot of problems immediately, uh, but it doesn't. And then, uh, to go along with that, you know, we got bids from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty to do some of this work. That, those bids are no longer any good. It's, uh, most, almost double that amount of the construction bid that we got back then to do all of the work that we bid at that time or we received, uh, engineers estimated a cost at that time to apply for these grants. Now the money comes in, there's not enough money to do the work, so we either have to ask for more money and wait a year or two for them to approve or deny that. And, uh, and while the cost of construction is going up the whole time, or we gotta cut down the amount of work. Commissioner Young just had to do that over in Saratoga over the past two years, uh, because the construction cost going up so much. And so like I said, beating a dead horse, we talk about it all the time, but people forget. And, uh, I just want to remind everyone that it's, it's not easy. We apply for every grant dollar we can get. Ms. Gore can attest to that because they have to, uh, handle all of that on their end and we sure do appreciate them doing so. But, uh, it's, it's, it's not made easy by the federal or the state government for us to spend that money. They'll get onto us all the time, hey, you gotta spend that money. And I tell them, if you'll release it, we will spend it and we'll, and we'll do it properly. So just thought it would be important to bring that up again.
Correct, and as a reminder, when they come and take the picture with the, the big checks, you can't go to, you can't take that to the bank.
Right.
You know, that's what, you know, most people don't realize when they take those pictures. I have a lot of people who literally will stand up in a commissioners' court meeting or city council meeting and say, you know, I saw the picture in the paper, you got the money. Um, they do not understand that, no, the, the money gets drawn down as the work progresses. The counties never had that money in their hands. Um, you've not spent it on a pool in your backyard or a vacation. You know, it's, it's not mi- money that's missing, it's work that has yet to be done. Um, so I definitely understand that piece of it.
Well, and the constraints, obviously that these programs you have to work with and that, that's a really, really big misconception. Uh, right with the LMI components, on and on and on, right? It's not just a free-for-all. You got this money, go, go tackle all these different projects as, as you want.
Jeff, you wanna do eight thirty tomorrow at post-plant? Can you do that?
Well, let me double check that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll definitely fix that.
Okay, so are there any others to consider or do you think those are going to be our three, Batson, Keith and Post-plant?
If either one of them won't work, Jeff, I know we looked at North Mill Creek before of raising that road going in.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cooper, what about off of Andover? Over there, is anything we should be looking at in that area? And let me ask this, if we, one of our projects is streets and drainage and we say two million or whatever that number is, can we spend it in two or three different areas?
No.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, that's a definitive. We must have one activity with one, let me have a caveat there, sorry. Um, with one beneficiary area.
Okay.
So there is a small chance we might continue to dis- disjointed streets, but the likelihood is, no.
And if Andover needs it, I'm good with.
Well, I know we need, uh, to do some work on, uh, Cooks Lake Road, but we should be getting PA money for that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sound good?
I'm good with working with anybody, whatever you need to do, whatever the priorities are.
Just don't wanna forget anything, 'cause, uh, tomorrow or a year from now, somebody's gonna watch this meeting and say, well, why didn't you talk about our road? Or our ditches or whatever. And, uh, we wanna make sure we consider everything that we can think of here today. We're on a very short timeline here too, so as I said, Melinda's been our rain administrator since last Tuesday about ten thirty A.M. And Jeff's been our engineer on these projects by the same amount of time. And then the deadline to submit is this Friday at five, or Thursday at five P.M.
And that was no fault of the counties. That was that the journey and office put these applications out, sorry, they're not an application any longer, they're copper projects.
Copper projects, yeah.
Um, but that came out October twenty-first with the two different projects.
If you submit a, a road project and after further digging it, it's not, it's not a good project, can it be moved?
Yes.
Okay.
With, with as little information as we are giving to them right now, um, that's why I say we, we can literally just put in four streets and you have the intent of say post-plant road being it, but if something comes up that works better in the meantime, then we would have the ability to make a change to that because nowhere in this would we have put, um, post-plant road.
It would just need to be a street project.
Correct.
In a different location.
Correct, and the reason I was advising the two million dollars, just so y'all will know, um, Harvey and Ike do have a maximum application amount of twenty million. Um, the likelihood of a twenty million dollar drainage project being completed in eighteen months is again, also going to be slim. Then on top of that, you're eliminating yourself from eligibility for anything other than those two when you are currently eligible for four out of the six disaster pots of money. The others do have the two million dollar cap. So we want to make sure that we are scoring as high as we can and giving you the most chance of success for the funding.
And with the match, I think one or two million is really should be looking at anyway.
And I do want to say for the record that we did look at putting Beaver Brook Bridge on there. Um, but with the, the time crunch and, um, the permitting for, um, that project would not, we would not be able to get it in this spring, so. And the LMI would be a problem in that area.
Well, maybe TDA will go up on the next cycle and maybe take Baker Brook on TDA.
And again, there is also the potential for the FIF funding. There will be another pot of money coming out, not soon, but I believe late twenty-five, early twenty-six. Um, and that's why it was so important to get the projects on the current plan. Um, it will have an amendment and the next pot of money will be based on this current plan. So anything y'all think of, be sure, um, as a matter of fact, anything, please email me. We'll make sure that it gets on there. Um, and then I'll be helping out with the, um, twenty-four through twenty-eight plan. And we'll have a little bit more flexibility for me to have input on y'all's behalf at that point as well. As a matter of fact, I think we start those meetings today. Um, I'm not sure if it's an internal meeting or if you'll be on that call later. Sounds like it's an internal.
Twenty-three to twenty-eight.
Twenty-three to twenty-eight.
It does, sure does. That's for sure, can anybody think of any other projects that might be eligible for this grant fund, anyone in the ring?
So communications is accessible if we wanted to look at building a new tower to replace one of our existing towers. That is something uh but I do believe, and the one that that I'm thinking of is moving Brag Tower, uh also go higher and and uh move that location. Uh but with current infrastructure is there to support communications already, this would more so be an upgrade. Uh I will say that the connection back to the core is is degraded tremendously every time it rains. That site loses connectivity and then communications is no longer uh well, communications as of last three or four times, it's done, has basically been degraded to the point where they couldn't talk to dispatch at their last rain event, uh via reprograms and stuff, now they can talk to dispatch. Uh so it's just, it's something that that in the future, we're gonna have to look at, possibly upgrading either that tower. Uh it is a Guy Tower, so we'll have to replace guys at some point or replace the tower.
Isn't that one about fourteen years old?
Uh it's way older than that, I believe it was built in the.
It's supposed to be forty years old.
Forty, yes, sir. I was thinking we did some.
You remember that tower?
I I believe, I believe we replaced Guy wires about forty years ago.
Three or four years ago.
Wow.
We replaced the Guy wires three or four years ago on that tower, didn't we?
The Guy wires, I think it's been longer than that, I think I was still in this though, and it was Guy wires. Grounding we did through.
Seems like we did something right after I got on the court, but I can't remember.
I think that's when we took it over, because it used to belong to uh Mobile Pipeline.
Okay.
And uh they were going to tear it down and we asked them to donate it to us earlier, and I actually did that, didn't we?
Yeah.
And they donated it to us, we accepted it.
Wow, that's true.
Then we accepted the responsibility.
Alright.
What is the uh pleasure of the court? Do we, is there any other projects that we wanna talk about first of all?
We have water tower.
Yes, sir.
Keith Road. Possibly post-plant, that one more, possibly North Mill Creek, anything on Andover?
I took care of the uh the major problem down there already.
The bridge?
Yeah. You never know what's going on underneath the surface.
Yeah.
Because that road stays underwater, I mean, right now, everything looks good on the upper end, the lower end is what I've already taken care of.
Do you, uh looking down the road, do you see anything else that may be uh coming up that maybe we could use for that Brag Tower? Right off the top of your head. And the reason I say that, uh Aaron's got an excellent idea there, but we really need to have Motorola do a search ring for us and see where would be a good area. Then we gotta see if we either have land in the area or try to find some, and that may throw us outside of our eighteen months.
And and.
Motorola's not the quickest to work with, and that's who we'd have to work with on that.
They're not, the GLO, so this is GLO money and their environmental, you'll basically end up probably having to do two environments. Because the tower has its own environmental and they do it, and I do it, and know everything they need to do. The other environmental, I don't know if it, a lot of the information is the same, but you're you're gonna end up paying somebody to do the GLO's environmental and then the other, so it's, it was just thrown out there, I I think it probably will reach two million plus as well. Uh depending on how high we go, so uh it's it's just a project, uh just going in out there.
And one of the things we had.
Let the court know that eventually we may have to do something there.
One of the things we hadn't discussed on that as well is um I do occasionally run into problems with the migratory birds on a tower. Um I've had more than one project receive letters about the number of birds were going to kill that migrate at night. Um I personally kind of say, well, that's survival of the fittest, but apparently.
Mr. Cooper, don't feel that way, he's very sensitive to that.
Okay, we have birdhouses on the tower. Birdhouse.
But I'm I'm not currently aware of anything that's out there right now, but again, there continues to be um you know, different programs that come out virtually every day. Um that I can certainly look to make sure that there's not something.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just keep your eyes open and uh i- if everybody's okay, we'll just skip that one for now. It sounds like there's two or three reasons we might would want.
Yep.
But that is a a tower that needs to be uh, it's the only one we own, we've got three tower sites that are tied into the radio system and it's the only one that we own currently. This is the tower we will own unless it's erected here in the next, Aaron says two months, I think it'll be six, but we'll see.
Before Christmas.
That's what they're saying.
So is that, just, I'm sorry, I have a question on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um the Soul Speed Tower, is that going to help with their PD or no?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, I'll visit with you in a little bit now.
Just for reference, hold on.
Well, it depends on what you're trying to help with, okay?
I think she's talking about in-building coverage, right?
I'm sorry.
Are they talking about some in-building coverage that they have issues with?
Um based on a conversation I had last week, it was my understanding that the Soul Speed PD is basically independent of the county.
From the dispatch service?
You're talking about for dispatch console, that that had nothing to do with the console.
Yes. Okay, got it.
Alright. Does everybody, uh any consensus that would go with the water well project, the Keith Road project and the uh post-plant project, is that right? Let's see, three, yes, yes, forward, alright, so uh I will uh, I'll end with a motion, I move to uh approve three projects for trade and associates as grand administrator for the GLO DRRP. First one being the uh sponsorship project for West Harden Water Supply, being the water well at Batson, water well number four. Second project being the Keith Road project and the third project being the post-plant project.
Okay.
With the uh caveat that we could change that, either of those later if we need to, up to two million dollars with a ten percent match, correct?
Yes, sir.
Saved by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move to number eight.
Yeah.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn, saved by Commissioner Kirk and Doll, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Have a great rest of your week.
Thank you.
And thank y'all very much for the discussion.
Yes, sir.